Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for the Pittsburgh Central School District. You'll please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
You may have a motion for approval of the agenda.
Second.
Robin, Renee, any additions?
Jeff, I would like to recommend that we take a few minutes to acknowledge the Board of Education with some speakers from the audience, and so adding Board appreciation to the agenda immediately following.
Thank you. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
It's now Board appreciation time. So I believe we have some people that are here tonight to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carrie Hoffman. I'm the immediate past president of P.I.O.P., which is Pittsburgh Education Office Professionals and School Aides. Our unit wanted to take the opportunity to thank you, all of you. We'd like to extend our sincerest gratitude for all the thoughtful leadership that you give to our staff, students, and families. Your commitment to the duties and responsibilities that you assume, the volunteer of your time, your effort, and your knowledge that you provide. As someone who has a view of a lot of the calendars, I know how much time goes into your weekends, your evenings, and time away from your families. It's greatly appreciated. The dedication and care you bring to the meetings, decision-making, and the events for the district support the well-being and success for all of us. We deeply appreciate all that you do that is seen and unseen. In grateful recognition of the service that U.S. Board members provide to Pittsburgh Central School Districts, P.I.O.P. has made a monetary donation to Pittsburgh Youth Services on the Board's behalf. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your kind words.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kim Chesko. I'm the Executive Vice President of the Pittsburgh District Teachers Association. I'm here representing the nearly 800 members of the PDTA. We want to express our heartfelt gratitude to you for supporting what we do as teachers and educators. We are in awe of the countless hours you dedicate to this volunteer position, to the benefit of us all within the PCSD and Pittsburgh community. We in PDTA are not unaware of how unique our relationship with our Board is. We approach every day with students, every decision made, every connection created, with the knowledge that we have a Board that supports us and strives to always work collaboratively toward the betterment of our schools and school community. I was struck during our work at our summer workshop that our Board members are experts in collaboration. In our discussions to craft policy for significant upcoming changes, our Board members listen to actively, forge creative solutions, and embrace the expertise of all stakeholders. The trust and shared vision that PDTA and the Board hold in common is truly what makes Pittsburgh schools a great place to work, and we thank you deeply for each of your individual roles in that. To show our appreciation, PDTA has pledged to make a donation in your honor to both the Pittsburgh Education Foundation and Pittsburgh Youth Services. Happy Board Appreciation Week.
Thank you, Kim.
Hello, I'm Megan Williams, Pittsburgh Central PTSA President. Thank you for having me up here tonight and allowing PTSA this opportunity to thank all seven Board of Education members, as well as the two students, for the countless hours they have spent in support of our district and children. In the Board and the school board fact sheet that I shared in this morning's e-news, it begins with, "School Board members take on one of the most important citizen responsibilities: overseeing the education of the community's youth. Board of Education guide their local school systems and ensure public schools are flexible and responsive to the needs of the community." School boards are comprised of volunteers, most of whom do not receive any compensation for their service. They are individuals within the community who dedicate their time to improving public education. These words hold immense personal significance to me as I grew up watching both of my parents commit themselves to the same pursuit as public educators. It was instilled into me at a very early age that the education and well-being of young minds is the noblest pursuit. This has shaped my own passions and values. To stand here and be able to celebrate members of my community who have the same ethos is extremely meaningful to me. Beyond my own personal admiration, PTSA is so grateful for the partnership that we have with the Board of Education. The countless hours that the Board of Education spends listening, learning, and engaging with our community to best meet the needs of our students does not go unnoticed. Thank you for the courage, dedication, and commitment to upholding a vision of excellence for the Pittsburgh Central School District. In your honor, Pittsburgh Central PTSA has pledged a $200 donation to the Pittsburgh Education Foundation in support of your commitment to the success of our Pittsburgh students. Thank you, and I hope that you enjoy this week of appreciation.
Thank you, Megan.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Julian, and on behalf of the Pittsburgh District Administrators Association, we just want to take a moment to thank you and express appreciation for the thoughtful work you do on behalf of our students, staff, and families. Your commitment to being student-centered is clear in the way you approach decisions, always asking how policies and practices will impact learning and well-being. It's reassuring to know that every decision is made with students at the best interest of the heart. We also appreciate your efforts to foster a supportive environment for all, whether it's through inclusive programming, mental health resources, our equity initiatives, or your support helping to create a school culture where everyone feels safe and appreciated. You focus on continual improvement, encouraging all of us to keep learning and growing, as we did this summer. Your curriculum updates to professional development, your leadership helps move our district forward in many meaningful ways. As a progressive Board, you've shown your willingness to embrace change and explore new ideas such as a cellphone plan. That mindset helps us stay responsive to the evolving needs of our students and the world around them. And finally, as everyone has mentioned, your collaborative approach. We would not be who we are without the collaboration between our Board, our educators, our families, and our community members, and this strengthens our shared commitment to public education. It's through these partnerships that we're able to build a stronger, more connected school community. So thank you for your time, your dedication, and your service. It is noticed, and we're grateful for your leadership and the positive impact you've had on our community. Together, we are building something extraordinary here. And so on behalf of the Board of Education, PDAA will be donating to the Pittsburgh Schools Student Opportunity Fund to continue to provide support for our students and our families. So thank you all.
Thank you, Melissa, and thank you all for the kind words. It's really an honor to serve the community in this capacity and be able to volunteer this way, and thank you all for your leadership. Please pass along our thanks to all of your members for all their hard work and their collaboration, and thank you all very much. Very much appreciated. And next on our agenda is a public hearing, first reading for the Code of Conduct.
Good evening. Thank you, and thank you all for your service, and happy Board of Ed appreciation. You'll see in the packet and to be posted online for the next 30 days, the recommended draft for the 25-26 Code of Conduct. So in addition to date changes, you'll also notice there's a few places where we have added artificial intelligence, or AI. So even though we felt that the code kind of encompassed that, we wanted to be really explicit, especially around the misuse of AI when it relates particularly to harassment and bullying, and knowing that that is explicitly covered in the code. So looking forward to any of your feedback, and again, that will be up for the next 30 days, and will come for a second reading at and your approval at our next meeting.
Thank you, Shayna. And next on the agenda, we have a principal's report, Mr. Foot, Thornell Road Elementary School.
On behalf of Thornell Road, thank you to the Board for Board Appreciation Week. I don't have a speech, but I have a beautiful presentation, so we'll get into that right now. So it was great to see everybody last week for visiting Thornell Road. We're always appreciative when you come over for events or just to support us or just to say hi. So thank you so much for coming, and I hope to highlight some of the things we saw, but then just kind of where Thornell's at to start the year. I start with a saying and a little call-response I started a few years ago with the students. So if you know anything about call-response, right, audience participation on this, when I say TRE, you say you know me. Everybody got it? Okay, ready? Let's try it. TRE?
You know me.
Better. TRE?
You know me.
Little weak. Our students are way better than that. So, you know, you have time to practice when I come back next year, okay? But so we really can boil down everything we're trying to do at Thornell Road by that saying right there, you know me. We're trying to drill into every student, get to know them as best as possible. We have a really large, wonderful kindergarten group, so we're in the process of getting to know those four and five-year-olds right now, and so that has kept us very busy so far in the first five, six weeks of school. Our SCL committee comes up with a theme to kind of rally us around each year, and this year we came up with Grow, Care, Connect, and with emphasis on the grow. So that's what I wanted to share today on how Thornell's growing, or growing in so many different ways, and that's really led to our focus and our work in the start of the school year, which is a shift for Thornell, I'll be honest. We have a different feeling about us this year, and you're about to see why. So I have a little by-the-numbers just for you. Growing our enrollment last year, 493, we're up to about 517 this year, which for the building, people hear that number, and people that have been there a long time go, whoa, you know, that's big for Thornell. And it feels like we have a lot of people in the building. Staff have grown over 100 this year, including support staff, shared staff, to meet a diverse portion of our student needs. In our sections, we're up to 28 classroom sections between our general education and special education programs. And we've grown our special education programs from two self-contained programs to three as of this summer, just to keep kids at Thornell and meet their needs and in the district as best we can. So thanks to Elizabeth Woods and everybody for planning and supporting our kids, and we're really working hard at supporting those students' needs and figuring them out. So just in on the size, our building is very big, and it feels like it, and that brings a whole set of new faces. I think we had about eight retirements last year, which, exactly, everybody was like, wow, not too new to me, but that's very new for Thornell, so we have a lot of new faces. So the bulk of our work so far has been just getting to know each other, kind of going back to basics. Faces, names, we have something planned for the conference day, just to get people to see, know each other in the hallways, because we feel very big. We are large as far as enrollment and a staff population with a lot of wonderful new faces around the building. So when you come, you might not recognize people, but they have been amazing so far, so we feel very lucky. We have grown in our services, right? So breakfast, we went from zero to 200, not even 100. We went from zero to about 200 breakfasts daily, and so that was a heavy lift, and our food service department is doing a phenomenal job. Shannon has been doing a great job, and thanks to Elena and the department, there's so, we didn't know it'd be this popular, to be honest. We did our surveying and thought maybe we'd get 50 or 60 breakfasts, and parents reported a little bit of increase in lunch, and I mean, that's our average, you know, daily numbers right there, 140 lunches to 300. So parents and students are very appreciative, and that's been consistent. It wasn't the first day, and then they trickled off. They just kept growing and growing, and so, you know, it's a great service to offer, and at least at Thornell, parents and families have really taken advantage of it and are appreciative, so that's been a big growth area for us. Our capital project, so something special about Thornell, this year we're the first elementary school to undergo construction, so if you're with us on Thursday, you saw the spaces, and I mean, the pictures and the numbers don't even do it justice, right? Like, the rooms were much bigger, the space that is going to be used is incredible. I mean, from going to not really having a way to use like locker rooms at elementary school, we haven't done that in I don't know how many years, to like a huge OTPT space, to doing three small group instructional spaces for mental health, services, offices, bathroom renovations. It's been pretty incredible to see, and it's coming out better than I even expected. So it's perfect timing if you match that with our enrollment. We need the space, and we're getting it right after winter break, I think. So our staff are doing a really good job, and parents about being flexible, things that are normal traditions at Thornell during the holidays, for example. We're having to find, where are we doing that this year? You know, spaces for everything, and everybody's just been really on board. So it's been really amazing to see, and we're very thankful for that upcoming space use and just the forward thinking, I think, on the district and the spaces and utilization. It's definitely, practically speaking, at the building level, it is very much needed, and will be, it's going to be fantastic. I don't want to jump into growth without, like, honing in on academics. And just a very small sample size, we've had the best results on all grade levels in New York State testing in the last four years. So we're growing in size, we're growing in staffing, we're growing in services, but we're growing academically, and we're doing very, very well. Every subject and every grade over 80% this year for the first time, and so we are really, from an academic standpoint, and that's just a little dipstick, we know the classroom performance is really what we look at, and those numbers are outstanding, too. So, you know, we're growing, we have new staff, we're changing, but we're thriving, and we're doing well, and everybody's hard work is really going to success in all definitions of success. So kids are happy, we're working really hard, teachers are tired, principals are tired, and happy, and it's just off to a really great start so far for the year. Our last sections about care that was really important to our group is that we added the word care based on our new people and faces and just making sure people feel welcome, students and staff and families. So we have added lunch groups to get to know you. We have over about 40 new move-in families overall, so just those kids are getting together just as a new group. We're new to the building, you know, and just checking in with each other, run by Maggie Craig, our school counselor. We have play groups, so we continue to pair up classrooms with a buddy class, so fifth and second, fourth and first, and third and K, and they were out today playing together, just having fun with different ages and connections, and those same groups will last all year. And so they'll get together at various points. It's been great for the older kids to help the younger kids and just build those connections. And then our Thornell Roadway Thursday, I read the Thornell Roadway every Thursday, but our staff and our students highlight specific people now in the last couple of years that are living the Thornell Roadway. And we put it up on our bulletin board outside the main office. We had a local artist, Liz, paint a little mural, and then they go up there and they stay there the whole year, and then students and staff get a copy of how they're living the Thornell Roadway. So hopefully, again, to know them, get them connected, feel great about where they go and what they're doing. Staff, Mondays are for staff, let's check in on the weekends, update a bill score, not this week or last. It's like we shout out what, you know, the things are going, and that's little things, like kids can shout out each other. We had a young student try to pay for his classmate at the book fair last week. You know, she really wanted a book and only had like this many, right? Guys, you guys are, you know, high school, but you understand, and she's like, I have this many, and it wasn't enough. And so he was like, here you go, let me help you out, and it was just really cute to see the interaction. And so that student got a shout-out on Monday for doing that, for that student. So little things that go a long way, and then they get to know time. I mean, on the conference day, we're spending time, literally name tags, get to know you, get to know a little bit about your family, who you are, where you're coming from, and just like cherish like the different experiences of our staff. So that's kind of what we're focused on. Those connections, we have PTSA, I can't say enough about our PTSA, especially this year. Our Fall Fest was, I think, the biggest since I've been there, most well-attended. We have more clubs than we've ever had before, and they are intentionally looking at offerings for K through 5, so every grade level has about an equal opportunity to clubs. It's been amazing. So we have the buddy classes, and we use student leadership all over the place. Our kids are the tour guides for kindergarten orientation, for new family orientation. I try to do as little as possible, and it works great. They do it all, and the families like couldn't stop commenting on how awesome that was to have kids take them around. So we hope to keep that going. Those buddy classrooms, those staff members also work together on all our professional development days. That way, they can really help talk and get into deeper conversations that are without kids. So we're continuing, we call those connected classrooms, and then there's weekly grade level time. So Thornell's off to a great start. Thank you for everything you're doing, thank you for all your support. It's been a great place to be. I hope you stop by more as your time allows you to. It's wonderful, you'll see, if you don't see me, we're all over the place. Check a closet until about January, we're all over, but it's been a great thing, and thank you on Board of Education Week. What a perfect week to come, so. If any questions, happy to answer them, but otherwise, you know, thank you, and thank you to all the students listening to me talk tonight. Great job. Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for hosting us. It was great to get together with the staff. I know you've all been working really hard, standing up some additional sections right before the school year started, and it was, you know, just really fun to get together with everybody, and, you know, your staff certainly echoed that it was a great start to the year. We got to see breakfast being served for the first time for many of us on the Board, which was like a well-oiled machine already. I mean, it was amazing how quickly you had the kids going through and getting meals delivered to the younger kids, and, you know, it looks like everything's going well. And see if there are any other questions or comments from those that were on the tour? All right. Thank you so much.
Good night, thank you. Yep, take care.
Next, may have a motion for approval of the minutes from the September 9th, 2025 Board of Education meeting. Thank you, Kim and Emily. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries? Thank you. First, we'll have a Board of Education report. There are several meetings coming up for the Monroe County School Boards Association. Board Leadership Meeting will be October 29th. Executive Committee Meeting will be December 3rd. Information Exchange meets on November 12th. District Operations Committee meets on October 15th. Legislative Committee meets on November 5th, and the next Steering Committee will be on November 5th as well. Would any members like to share out any reports? Kim?
Okay, so Information Exchange has had two meetings since our last Board meeting. In September, there was a presentation by the Webster School District on AI, and Sarah shared it out. If you haven't had a chance to look at the PowerPoint, some key, it was phenomenal, and some key takeaways were that they had a committee look at privacy policies, safety measures around student mental health, because there have been some severe cases of AI and young people and the extreme harm that it's caused. So it's really, that was kind of eye-opening. Just looking for teachers, how to teach AI skills, how to use it in the classroom, because it's not going away, it's everywhere, and preserving critical thinking skills and social skills in spite of AI. So it was a really great presentation, like I said, really eye-opening. And then October 8th was shared services between school town and village, so Hilton, Hamlin, Parma, and Grease, and I loved that it reminded me a lot of our town-village-school partnership. They do basic functions like fuel sharing, security, equipment sharing, but then some specialized things like school buses and drivers for their Apple Festival. High school art show is hosted at the Hilton Community Center, so just some really creative things that they're doing to partner between school, school district, village, and town, but we're already doing a great job here in Pittsburgh, too. So two really great presentations. I'll share out the PowerPoints.
Great, thank you for sharing, Kim. Sarah?
Just wanted to share a little bit about the Legislative Committee and give everyone an update here. So at our last meeting, we formed our subcommittee to work on our position papers for this year in that subcommittee. Thank you, Emily, for joining us with that. We met last week on Zoom and went through our papers that we had for last year. We decided to table three of them for this year that are keeping them, if we need to pull them back out maybe later in the year, next year, but universal meals in schools, something we've already talked about tonight, so we know that we can kind of put that paper aside for right now. Bus drivers needed, still an issue nationwide, the bus driver shortage, but we've decided that we can kind of work that into some of our other conversations in other ways. And then also minimum wage, we, that was a paper that we've had for the past couple of years with the increases that we were seeing from the state, but now knowing that that's not going to change, we've decided to table that paper for the time being. Our paper on zero emissions buses is one that we decided to shift our focus. We still have not heard the final word from the governor that she will be delaying the mandate, the January 1st, 2027, start to that mandate. Although everyone of our legislature is telling us that that's likely to happen until we have that official word, we are shifting our focus to what districts are to do when communities say no, that they are not approving the purchase of zero emissions buses and the related infrastructure. What are we to do as far as compliance with the mandate? So that's where our paper is going, that direction for now. We're also creating two new papers this year on universal pre-K and New York State Building Aid. So I'm working through those papers right now with our subcommittee, and we will have those ready for Legislative Committee Meeting on November 5th, and then go to Steering, and then finally to Executive Committee for Approval, ready to use for our December Zoom in December. So that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. And Robin?
Yes, I have, this is my first year serving on the District Operations Committee for Monroe County School Boards, and although in our topic in September was civil service law and process, and that's an annual presentation, though civil service law and process hasn't changed much, I would like to just take this time to highlight and recognize that we have experts from our district, Pittsburgh District, who make the presentation, and that would be our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Sean Clark, and our median past Assistant Superintendent for Resources, Human Resources, so Mike Leon. So thank you very much for your expertise in making us look good as a district.
Thank you, Robin. Any others? Okay. And next, I'd like to turn over to our student Board members, welcome them to our, to the second meeting that they've been with us, and here are their student reports.
Hi, everyone. At Sutherland, as expected, people are still adjusting to the device policy. One challenge that was kind of brought to my attention was that students are facing trouble like maintaining communication throughout the day, whether it's for clubs or sports or other activities. For instance, last week was Spirit Week, so there were many students that needed to communicate about like their roles for manning the stands for ticket and shirt sales. That was kind of a problem. When plans change in the middle of the day, it can lead to lots of confusion, because students are unaware of the changes usually, if they don't get any confirmation from like club advisors or coaches or people like that. We're hoping communication between coaches and club advisors with student leaders will be improved or at least a bit more streamlined. And on another note, the homecoming dance was a huge hit. Both Sutherland and Mendon opted for a homecoming dance as opposed to a winter formal dance, and this decision was a great one, as Sutherland sold approximately 560 tickets and raised around $11,200 as a result. And this is compared to the 130 tickets sold at the winter dance last year, so it's a huge success. Feedback from students who attended the dance was really great, and the anticipation for Hoco Dance throughout the week was extremely high. Student council worked really hard decorating, planning, and promoting the dance on social media as well, and school spirit throughout Spirit Week was also very high, as many people participated in the themes and dressed up, and I'm pretty sure our senior class won that competition.
At Mendon, I also wanted to start off talking about sports and Hoco. So our homecoming dance was a really big hit over at Mendon, too. I think we sold, I know we definitely sold more than 400 tickets. I don't know the exact number, but it was a much bigger turnout than the student council was expecting, so that's really great to see all of the students participating and taking part in school activities. For us, Spirit Week also went really well. I saw a lot of participation personally. For Mendon, Color Wars is like our biggest thing, it's on Friday, and all the different classes wear their different colors. So for juniors, it's blue, and like seniors is orange, and you kind of dress up and go all out. It was really fun. And then moving on to clubs, this year I've seen a lot more participation in clubs, and like compared to last year with the light buses especially, what I've seen is last year, sometimes I'd take the light bus, and there'd be like three or four people on the light bus with me, but this year, like today I took the light bus, and there were like 10 people on there, which I think just goes to show how a lot more people are staying after school for clubs and different extracurricular activities. I think we also have a bit more variety in our clubs this year. There's some clubs that I haven't seen in previous years, during the club fair especially, everyone had booths, and I think there's something for everyone, and whatever you enjoy, you can find your group of people, you know? Going on to the phone policy, I think we've been doing pretty well at Mendon concerning lockers, like I haven't really seen people going to their lockers and like trying to use their phones between classes or anything like that. It has been a little bit difficult with communication sometimes with, like, when you want to communicate with someone or when you want to send an email, and you have to like pull out your laptop and log in, and it's like a 12-character password, and, you know, you're like, you're like, I just want to send an email, like, I just need to send like a remind text, you know? I just, it's a two-second question, but like 12, 12-character password, and this and that, and you have to like wait for it to upload. But I think we've been handling that pretty well. We do try to keep communication with our teachers and between students. So yeah, that's kind of my report for Mendon. Thank you.
Thank you both very much for everything you shared with us, and the phones and homecoming. Glad to hear the homecoming dances were a huge success. That was great. I've heard all positive things, again, from yourselves and from others, so that, that was great.
And I'm with you on the passwords. It's getting out of hand. In the boot, the computer, and it takes forever.
Last week was Cyber Security Awareness Week, so. Do we have any other comments or questions for the student report? Okay. Next, I'll share a brief report on the Audit Oversight Committee. We met on October 1st. We reviewed the Claims Auditor Report, Internal Auditor Report, and the External Auditors Report. Very pleased to share that we continue to perform very strongly against all three audits. Claims Auditor Report noted just some very minor findings, which we are working on correcting. For the internal audit, there was a focus on payroll. Again, some very minor findings, which we expect to resolve as we look at more automated systems for payroll. And the next area of focus for our internal audit will be in the accounts payable area. They'll be in the fall. The External Auditors provided an unqualified opinion that we performed very strongly. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Again, just some very minor findings noted that are being corrected quickly. And that's, any questions or comments on the Audit Oversight Report? Thank you. Dates to remember, schools will be closed on October 20th for Superintendent's Conference Day. And on October 30th, we'll have a board visit and tour at Park Road Elementary School. And on November 4th is our next regularly scheduled board meeting. Next, we'll have the financial report, Mr. Heisler.
Thank you. I got a lot of them, sorry. We've been busy. The first item we have for your consideration is the acceptance of the, acceptance of the treasurer's reports for the months of June, July, and August. Now that the year-end audit is done, we could get June done and subsequently the other July and August.
Thank you. You've had opportunity to review all of these actions in your packet. So if there are any questions, just please let us know. But may I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report for June, July, and August? Sarah and Renee? Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries, thank you.
The second item we have is the fourth quarter extra-class activity report.
You may have a motion to approve the fourth quarter extra-classroom activities report. Thank you, Emily and Kim. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries, thank you.
Third for your consideration is the External Audit Report for the financial year ending June 30th, 2025.
You have a motion to approve the External Audit Report acceptance resolution? Thank you, Robin. Sarah? Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
For your consideration is the External Audit Report Response, which we prepare to the findings that you noted earlier.
You have a motion to approve the External Audit Report Response. Thank you, Renee. Thank you, Emily. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Next, we have for your consideration, the acceptance of the Internal Audit Report and the Corrective Action Plan to those minor findings we had.
We have a motion to approve acceptance of the Internal Audit Report and Corrective Action Plan. Thank you, Sarah. Kim? Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Number six for your consideration is the adoption of the Budget Development Calendar for the 26, 27 fiscal year.
We have a motion for adoption of the Budget Development Calendar for fiscal year 2026, 2027. Renee? Robin? Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Number seven for your consideration is the resolution approving all capital project change orders that have happened since the last board meeting.
We have a motion for resolution approving the capital construction project change orders. Thank you, Sarah. Emily? Any comments or questions regarding the change orders? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Number eight for your consideration is the resolution to accept Fiscal Advisors and Marketing, Inc. Financial Advisory Services Agreement for the...
You may have a motion for, to accept, resolution to accept the Fiscal Advisors and Marketing, Inc. Financial Advisors Services Agreement. Thank you, Sarah. Kim? Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
For your consideration, number nine is the Declaration of Surplus Equipment. Twelve fire-resistant filing cabinets to be sold.
We have a motion to approve the Declaration of Surplus Equipment for the 12 fire-resistant filing cabinets. Thank you, Robin. Renee? Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Number 10 for your consideration is the Declaration of a surplus equipment in the Special Education Department for an exercise bike.
We have a motion to approve Declaration of Surplus Equipment for the bike from the Special Education Department. Thank you, Sarah. Kim? Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
And finally, number 11 for your consideration is the bid awards, which are on your consent agenda.
Thank you. Next, we'll have this Human Resources Report with Mr. Clark.
Thank you. First for your consideration is the Professional Staff Report. We have one administrator appointment, an administrator resolution, three certificated staff appointments, seven school-related professional appointments, one supervisory and technical appointment, three building substitutes, three teacher-fellow appointments, one building substitute resignation, two school-related professional resignations. We have fall coaching salaries and per diem substitute appointments as well.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Professional Staff Report? Thank you, Renee. Thank you, Sarah. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next for your consideration is the Support Staff Report. We have 10 clerical appointments, one clerical resignation for retirement, one transportation resignation, one custodial maintenance appointment, two custodial maintenance resignations for retirement, and five food service appointments.
We have a motion to approve the Support Staff Report. Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Kim. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Curriculum Report, Ms. Clayton.
Thank you. Happy School Board Appreciation Week. And the celebrations that I am about to share are also just a function of all your support with our programs and resources and the hard work that our teachers and principals are doing day in and day out, and most importantly, our students. So just a reminder of our process when we receive our data. We get our scores from NISID in August. And our building administrators take a day and spend time with the data, really looking at the aggregate data, but also looking at individual student data and trends. And our standards leaders and our teachers also take a look at the data and use it to set instructional goals and inform curriculum writing, assessment writing, et cetera. Our total aggregate results, we went up in every single area. Just want to also really point out Science 5 and Science 8. If you remember, last year, we had new assessments that were very dense, very literacy-based, and very challenging for the kids. Our Science 5 went up by 10% and our Science 8 went up by 12%. So we saw boosts in all areas, and we were very happy to see that. So looking at our ELA proficiency rates, grades three through seven all saw an increase in their scores. Grade 8 was just a minor decrease of about 4%. But grades, celebrations with grades three and five that had gains greater than 10%. When we look at our mastery rates, I also just want to point out we did see some pretty significant increases with our amount of students receiving Level 4 on the exams. So in ELA, grade 3 saw an 11% increase in mastery rate. Grade 4, a 3% increase in mastery rate. And grade 5, an 8.8% increase in mastery rate. So not only are we seeing our proficiency rates growing, we're also seeing our mastery rates growing. In grade 7, we saw a 13% increase in our mastery rates. Where 6 and 8 were more holding steady, but grade 8, we also saw a 7% increase in overall proficiency on the ELA 8. Always of interest are county comparisons. We have this all shuffled and coded, so you'll never know. But I know who District 5 is, and I'm watching them. We're all watching them. But proud to say that we were number one or two in the county. And where we were number three, it was only because 1 and 2 had the same number. So in a way, we were two and a half. But just very proud of our performance across the board, grades 3, 4, and 5. And our middle schools should really be proud. They were number one for ELA 7, number one for ELA 8, which was really exciting. In math, similar story. We saw increases particularly in grades 3, 7, and 8. And in grade 8, we saw an increase of 11% with their proficiency ratings. Looking at our Level 4s, we also saw some growth. Grade 3 saw an 8.8% increase in mastery rate. And grade 7, I really have to put my glasses on, I apologize. Grade 7 saw a 10% increase in mastery rate for math. Again, with our county-wide comparisons. In grade 3 math, we were number one in the county. 4 and 5, we were number 2, number 3. But our middle schools had a sweep, 6, 7, and 8, math 6, 7, and 8. And the story I really want to tell here is a lot of the work that Kathy Curtis has done with the math department. As a result of our math grouping ad hoc committee, we really have fleshed out course descriptions, rewrote curriculum, rewrote common assessments, boosted the rigor within those courses and made some curricular changes that have obviously yielded some great results for our kids. Here's our story with our Science 5 and 8. Proud of the increases there, especially given the length and the rigor of those assessments. And our mastery rates, although they look small on this graph, we saw a 10% increase in our mastery rates for grade 5 science and a 12% increase in our mastery rates for grade 8 science. So overall, a very impressive job, 3 through 8. We're continuing to look at our mastery rates, and we're also continuing to look at our subgroups. We had a lot of celebrations with our students with disabilities also increasing in their mastery rate. But we're continuing to take a close look at race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status. Our ENL population has doubled. So we always have a keen eye on our students that are speaking alternate languages and what we need to be doing to be supporting them instructionally. So they are meeting success on this one measure of state assessments. Our opt-out trends have held pretty steady. We saw a little bit of a decrease this year. You can see 2023 was really a big year for opt-outs, particularly when we get to 6, 7, and 8. But those numbers have held steady and been low. So continued work at our Instructional Leadership Council, all of our other subgroups that meet regularly. We have a real commitment to a continued look at data for all conversations that we're having about students. So having data at the table to substantiate what we're feeling is happening and looking at trends. And even though we're doing well, in the spirit of continuous improvement, how do we continue to grow in those areas? That's one thing we're excited about with the math is, while our kids have typically done well on state math assessments, we had a real need to grow our instruction and pedagogy around our kids as mathematical thinkers and their mathematical identities and willingness to take risks in math. And all of the work we're doing at K-5 will just make them even stronger moving on in a variety of settings and not just on the state assessment. So all the way up to the portrait of a graduate and how our kids are doing all the way through with the courses they're choosing to take and their success in school and beyond. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Heather. Thank you for the presentation. And thank you to the data team for all their work. I know they put into helping you with that. Next, we have a Special Education Report, Ms. Woods.
Good evening. All committee recommendations are on the consent agenda.
Thank you. And Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. There is not a need for an executive session this evening. First for your consideration is a field trip approval to Atlanta, Georgia. And that is for Mendon High School DECA.
We have a motion to approve a field trip to Atlanta, Georgia for Mendon High School DECA. Thank you, Robin. Thank you, Kim. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Similarly, field trip approval to Atlanta, Georgia for Sutherland High School DECA.
We have a motion to approve the field trip to Atlanta, Georgia for Sutherland High School DECA. Emily? Sarah? Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Just out of curiosity, anyone, any students going to either one of those? Part of DECA? Are you going? Okay. Okay. You're going to make it. Pack your bags. You're going. Very cool. Nice job. Just a few special thank yous to PTSA. Significant donations. One donation of $12,500 for a visiting author at five of our elementary schools. And then the second is a donation for $40,927.35 for the annual cultural art program at all nine of our Pittsburgh schools. So thank you to our PTSA. For your consideration, we also had the deletion of policies that were prior to our new device policy. So they're obsolete. So we have deletion of Policy 5687, possession and use of personal cell phones in schools. And then we also have deletion of Policy 5688, electronic devices with photographic or text messaging capability. And that's being replaced with Policy 7316. I don't think we need, do we need approval for that? Okay, it's on consent. Okay, great. And then for your consideration in the first reading for our next board meeting is Policy 7510 is our district wellness policy. And just a couple other announcements. Pretty soon, we will have our architects and construction managers come in and do a public report on our current capital project. And then another capital project that we will be posing to the community for vote sometime late winter, early spring, most likely the February-ish timeline. And just to bring the public back to where our capital project process is, we have a long-term facilities project that was pushed a couple of years behind because of the COVID days. Our current project right now is going markedly well. And everything is on time and on budget. However, our building condition survey has shown significant needs that we need to address in the very near future. So in February, just like our last project, we will be asking the voters to consider around a $45 million project without additional taxes that will be funded through... around a $45 million project without additional taxes that will be funded through our capital project, our capital reserve, as well as state reimbursement. And this capital project would be the start of bringing in air conditioning in some of our large areas, and then a lot of infrastructure work, HVAC work, roof work, air quality work, et cetera. And then following that project in about three years, we'll be asking the community to approve another project that will also include more air conditioning, and it will include the Mendon High School pool replacement. And moving out 10 years down the road, the goal would be to have all nine of our schools be equipped with a significant amount of AC, particularly on the second and third floors, large group, large areas of assembly. So we will lay all of that, that 10-year plan out formally, but wanted to introduce the concept here tonight that we are looking at continuing the capital project work with a new referendum for vote probably in, in February, March timeframe. Are there any questions? And we all just had a board workshop on the capital project, so appreciate your attendance Do students have any interest in air conditioning in the schools? Okay, there's a good, there's a good one. I love it. I guess I would just like to close with a few words for the Board of Education for our Board Appreciation Week. I do want to extend my heartfelt gratitude for your dedication, all of your thoughtful leadership, your commitment to our students, our staff, our community. You volunteer to be present monthly, very early in the morning, at all nine of our schools. You meet with staff, you inspect the facilities, you give up multiple evenings from your families for board meetings, for workshops, for retreats, as well as time throughout the summer, which is precious time. Your impressive efforts behind the scenes are often done without recognition, but are the foundation upon which our district continues to grow, continues to innovate, and continues to thrive. Your vision and your support have empowered us to pursue excellence in education, ensure that every child has the opportunity to succeed. Whether navigating complex challenges or celebrating milestones, your guidance has been instrumental in shaping a brighter future for all of us. On behalf of our entire district, I thank you for your service, your integrity, and your belief in the transformation, the transformative power of education. It is a privilege to work alongside such a dedicated team of advocates for public education. So I give you a big thank you for all you do so well every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Just reiterate what I said earlier, that it really is an honor and a privilege to serve the community this way and to work with all of you to serve public schools in Pittsford, so thank you very much.
And instead of donations, there is cash in your envelopes. Is that okay? Is that going to come out in the audit report, Terry?
I think you forgot to put it in mine.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Thank you, Renee. Thank you, Sarah. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Do we have any old business? Any new business? Okay. We have a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Kim. All in favor? Thank you, everyone. We're adjourned.